And take roll call.
Okay, Mr. Hillsinger.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Sneed.
Do you hear that?
I hear you now.
Okay.
I hear you are here. Mr. Fagan.
Here.
Ms. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Hancock.
Here.
So right now we got seven. We're good to go. First item is two A. We need a motion to accept the meeting minutes from January eighth executive meeting. And the in the January twenty fifth.
Elliott.
We have a second.
Second emotion.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it seven zero. Two B is in a motion except the public hearing and executive session from February twelfth. The minute.
So move Taylor.
Second it bill.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Eyes have it seven zero. We have no status sheet. No committee reports. So we'll go to the first new business item, which is PC oh one dash twenty four St. Clair Ministries in under signs.
Good evening Commissioners. PC zero one dash twenty four St. Clair Ministries and on the sign is a request for a change in zoning from C eight plan commercial district to R three residence districts. This request will permit all our three uses, but tonight's the request is to develop a church slash worship center and daycare on a zero point seven five attract located in the north east side of New Horse Ferry Road approximately three hundred feet southeast of West Florissant Avenue. We are bringing this to you tonight as a letter of recommendation. As the Commissioners may recall, the site is in the North County and to the right of the screen is a subject site outlined in red. This is a larger area photograph showing the site and its vicinity. It is bounded by single family homes to the east and south and a mix of commercial and residential developments to the north. To the west are planned commercial districts. Again, the request is a change in zoning from C eight's plan commercial district to R three residence districts. For context, the site and much of the surrounding area was zone R three in nineteen sixty seven, but was resoned in two thousand and two to see its plan commercial district to convert the existing single family home into an insurance office via ordinance twenty thousand nine hundred and eight. Again, the approval of this is going to permit all R three uses, but the request before you tonight is a church slash worship center and daycare. The petitioner stated that they own the parcel adjacent to the site. This, this was the preliminary site plan shown at the public hearing. This serves as an information piece here as it was not considered while writing the letter of recommendation because it is a straight zone. The department recommends approval because the general vicinity of the site is presently developed with a mix of commercial and residential uses. The proposed use is deemed suitable for this location and also a site development plan will be reviewed for any development. At this time, I request a recommendation of approval.
Okay, this time we need a motion.
So moved.
Is that for the approval in the letter?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Again. Paula.
Discussion, anyone? And we do have review on this down the road, correct?
Well, this would go through the standard site development plan review procedure. If changed to R three, it wouldn't come back to the planning commission, but the planning department would review it. Just like any straight zone district. Because there's, they're not asking for a special procedure or planned district here.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Eyes have it seven zero. And next item is PC oh two dash twenty four Gregory J Schaefer.
All right. Good evening Commissioners. This is PC oh two dash twenty four Gregory J Schaefer. So request for a conditional use permit in a C two shopping district to permit the occupancy of a tattoo parlor. This is a zero point four three acre tract on the northwest corner of Gravois Road and New Hampshire Avenue. And this is coming to you as a letter of decision. As the Commissioners may recall, the site is in South County and on the aerial is bounded in red. This is a multi-tenant building and the proposed tattoo parlor would occupy a vacant unit. When considering the appropriateness of the conditional use permit procedure, there are four criteria that the department evaluates. One is it consistent with good planning practice? Two, can it be operated in a manner that is not detrimental to the permitted developments and uses in the district? Three, can it be developed and operated in a manner that is visually compatible with the permitted uses in the surrounding area? And four, is it deemed essential or desirable to preserve and promote the health, safety and general welfare of St. Louis County? Tattoo parlors are a conditional use within the C two district and tattoo parlors are not a permitted use in any district. According to the petitioner, as heard during public hearing, per the lease agreement, no site improvements are proposed. The department is recommending approval of this request. The proposal passes the four-pronged conditional use test. First, a tattoo parlor is appropriate along Gravois Road, which is an established commercial corridor. Next, as stated during public hearing, the petitioner estimates a maximum of three customers in the shop at once. This is a relatively low intensity use and will not impede other uses within the building. Per the lease agreement, no exterior modifications are permitted, which keeps the site visually compatible with surrounding uses. And finally, the petitioner noted his personal commitment to specific tattoo arts that restore patients' health and self-esteem. It's important to note that conditional use permits are strongly tied to the proposed business use. So while the petitioner's tattoo shop meets the criteria for the conditional use permit procedure, future tattoo shops or developments may not meet the same criteria. So thus, the department is recommending approval contingent on the continued occupancy of the petitioner Gregory J Schaefer, subject to renewal every five years via correspondence.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion.
All your motion.
For both. We have a second. Second, Fagan. Discussion, anyone? What are we doing on signage here?
So according to the lease, there no outside signage is permitted. It's just one inside the shop in the window.
One in the window?
Mm hmm.
And this would also have to meet the standards of the C two shopping district signage. So there's already a freestanding business sign at that site. So they would be permitted, just to put us a placard within the existing sign.
And the reason I ask is the one we approved some years ago at Lindbergh and Lee May Ferry was going to be low key and it's, it's windows are now lit up like a Christmas tree. And I don't think we need that here either. So, okay. With that, we need a show of all those in favor. One question, Wayne.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, just trying to understand the renewed after five years via correspondence. What exactly? Is that just a simple? They send in a letter, please extend it another five years or renew it?
That is correct, Mr. Fagan. So our intent on that is because, because we do find that tattoo, tattoo facilities can when they're done well, can, can promote the health, safety and welfare of residents, but they can also become like Mr. Hillsinger is stating, they can also become sort of an aesthetic detriment to the community. So we are, we did put into here, which we don't typically have not done in the past in conditional use permits too frequently, but we are recommending that the petitioner be required to submit to this commission a letter every five years as he deems appropriate that he wants to operate at this site so that the commission can reevaluate at that time period whether he has in fact been operating in a manner that is beneficial to the community.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for the explanation.
Wayne?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Sneed. Is there a, a standard for decorating the windows in other establishments?
There are limits on window signage.
In a window. I thought there was, but.
Yeah, it's a percentage. Can't, I can find it, but it's a, it's a limitation on, you know, it's well under half the window has to be.
Okay.
It's definitely under half the window, but I can find that for you.
No, no, that's all right. Thank you.
Yes, there are limits on, on window signage. And then I would note that Mr. Bedell has joined the meeting.
Okay. We're at eight. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Eyes have it eight zero. And we'll go on to PC oh three dash twenty four Black Tree Associates or Association.
Good evening. PC oh three dash twenty four Black Tree Association LLC is a request for a conditional use permit in the R five Residence District and Floodplain R five Residence District for a private not-for-profit recreational land uses, including outdoor recreational sports field and associated lighted athletic field for fourteen point one two acres located on the northeast and southwest side of Mount Olive Road, approximately two hundred and sixty feet west of Marchy Drive. As you can see from the context map, this site is located in South County and this site does have two parcels. The larger parcel I will refer to as parcel B and the smaller parcel I will refer to as parcel A. So as you can see from this larger map, this area is primarily surrounded by R five residential homes and then Grants Trail fronts closer to Hoffmeister. So this is coming before the commission as a request for a conditional use permit. All conditional use permit requests are evaluated and a decision is made based on whether the proposed use is consistent with good planning practice, can be operated in a manner that is not detrimental to the permitted developments and uses in the district, can be developed and operated in a manner that is visually compatible with the permitted uses in the surrounding area, is deemed essential or desirable to preserve and promote the public health, safety and general welfare of St. Louis County. In the R five Residence District, private not-for-profit recreational land uses are considered conditional use in this district. And as the commission may recall from the public hearing, the proposed use is a private non-for-profit recreational lane use for sports field and associated lighted athletic field for a youth soccer club. The preliminary site development plan shown at public hearing, there's nothing change wise happening to parcel B. They plan to reutilize the existing three thousand six hundred square foot building and reutilized to movable sheds on parcel B. Parcel A is where the most change will be seen. They're proposing seventy four parking spaces with an alternative dustproof parking surface. And at this time, they are not proposing any athletic field lighting. Staff is recommending approval. The conditional use permit procedure is appropriate mechanism for permitting a private non-for-profit recreational land use, including outdoor recreational sports fields. The proposal passes the four-pronged conditional use permit test as a private non-for-profit recreational land use, specifically a soccer club is compatible with the existing permitted uses long Mount Olive Road, such as single-family residences. The proposed improvements to the site will ensure that the site remains visually compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed use is essential or desirable to preserve and promote the public health, safety and general welfare of St. Louis County as they provide recreational opportunities to youth. And the proposal is consistent with good planning practice to locate recreational sports fields within a residential neighborhood. Staff, however, is recommending some changes to the preliminary site development plan such as all gravel shall be removed from the public right of way. And they will have to seek a variance from the Board of Zoning Adjustment to permit a dustproof alternative parking surface. And lastly, in this conditional use permit, at this time, we have written that no athletic field lighting will be permitted. So when and if the petitioner decides that they want to have athletic field lighting, they will have to come back as a correspondence item to this commission. And at this time, I ask for a motion of approval.
Okay.
Make a motion for approval, Taylor.
We have a second.
Second Elliott.
Okay, we have a second discussion.
Yeah. This is Sneed. The the hours of operation and that are all spelled out, I'm sure, in the ordinance.
So we do not have the hours. We did not have the hours of operation in this conditional use permit because of the athletic field lighting not being a part of this. They're obviously going to have to end by the time it starts getting dark. At this point in time, it, I think, and Jacob and Mel, if you feel differently, I think if they were to come back down the road for lighting, that would be something we, the commission could reconsider.
Right, like, like, just like you said Gretchen, right now they're sort of limited by the amount of light they have. And then just like Gretchen said, outdoor athletic field lighting has to be extinguished by eleven P M. Or an hour after activities are over. Anyway, but you know, what the commission can also consider putting a different limit on that lighting if that request comes forward.
From, from the diagram that you showed, what, what is the closest residential residence to the fields, for instance?
So the fields, Abby, can you go forward one more? So on parcel B, if you can see this little box where it says like the Mount Olive Road, like right by where we have that parcel B indication, the fields are out. There are three fields from what I saw on their slideshow at public hearing. It looks like those three fields are kind of out in this area. They're not. And then the residential homes are more to the east.
Do you go back to the aerial? Yeah, so you can see the first home next to it is on sort of a larger lot. And then along most of that shared property line, it's, it is the rear yard, but it, you can see them there on that northeast side of Mount Olive.
Yeah, they'll be, the fields will be closer to the Gravois Creek is what they showed at public hearing on their slides.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and those fields are already kind of, they're working on those, right? So.
Yes, that is correct. They are operating.
Yeah.
Before this, correct?
Right. So they've been able to use an existing C U P to operate on that larger tract, but that conditional use permit doesn't cover the legal description of it, doesn't cover the smaller tract on the other side of Mount Olive. So for them to use it for the parking associated with this use, they're asking for a C U P that covers both, but they've been able to do some of that conversion from baseball to soccer already on that main track.
Thank you.
I didn't totally understand the part about the dust-free parking. What are, what are we saying with that?
So in the R, in the R five, they are not allowed to have gravel. They have to use an alternative dustproof surface. But in order.
They have to, it has to be paved. In the R five, it's supposed to be paved. And in some of the, in the non-urban district, in the floodplain district, the lower, much lower intensity districts, the zoning ordinance allows you to use what's called an alternate dustproof surface. So it means basically a gravel like surface that doesn't pick up dust. You can use those surfaces in those lower intensity zoning districts, but in the R two and up, your driving surfaces and your parking spaces are both supposed to be paved. So the only way for them to use this surface they've shown on the plan is for them to seek relief from the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Because the commission, if they grant this conditional use permit, they can only put additional criteria on top of what the R five requires. You can't remove. You cannot give them that right through the conditional use permit. They can only get relief from that requirement from the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
So we're basically saying that they can, instead of having it be paved, they can have a sort of a low dust gravel alternative?
But the conditional use permit would not permit that. We are, we are just noting that so the commission knows. So the commission could grant this C U P. And basically unless they get relief from the Board of Zoning Adjustment, they would have to pave this as, as concrete or asphalt. So it's either going to be concrete or asphalt. If the C U P is granted or if it's a dust-free surface, it will be because they've gotten a variance from the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
So. But, but the commission could recommend as a condition to be paved. Is that correct? Yes.
If the commission feel, felt strongly about that, that could be something noted in the report. Jacob, do you, what do you think? Sorry.
So. So when it comes to the issuance of a conditional use permit, the planning commission's authority to do so. I, you know, that may be something to add that we, that we would confer with our legal, with our legal team about whether the planning commission could even preclude a petitioner from requesting an alternative dust, dust pre-surface. As I, as I talk through it out loud, I think that a property, an individual property owner still has the right, no matter what, as long as it's conforms with chapter ten oh four, which is the Board of Zoning Adjustments ordinance to request that relief. Now, the way that that would play out in reality would be that staff would go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment and make the planning commission's opinion known to the Board of Zoning Adjustment as they are adjudicating the case in front of them. But as a personal and private property rights issue, the property owner, as I talked through this, would still be able to go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment and request that relief. But staff would ensure that the B Z A was well aware of the planning commission's desire to see that site paved. Now, what I will say is that from the staff's perspective, because this is a fairly large site, it, it, it's kind of at the end of a you know, residential street. We do find that an alternative dustproof surface can be appropriate at this site. The way that it would be designed is that they would have the drive aisles inside of it would be paved and then the parking would be permitted on that dustproof surface. You know, for its site, we find that that is, is reasonable, but if the commission finds and desires, you know, for us to make that, that statement to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, we would do so.
Right. It, it's just a, a take up. My, my memory serves me correctly. We've done that a number of times specifically on Baumdorner Road where trucking companies wanted to pull in on gravel and, and that type of thing. And, and we made it a part of the ordinance.
Yes, and I think that would be when the commission utilizes the planned, the planned industrial zone. Cause that is then when legislative, your recommendation then goes for the adoption of an ordinance by the county council, which would then include inside of it, essentially your ordinance is a mini zoning ordinance that could include that pavement in the planned districts. But because the conditional use permit procedure is at its core, it's really rooted in the zoning ordinance as a, as a document ten oh three, the generalities of the zoning ordinance. And we're sort of reviewing whether a use is appropriate, just because it can be contextually sensitive. And so that's why it's legally a little different as to what you can do in a C U P versus the planned districts.
Okay, versus the planned district, but I also remember some housing that was being converted and, and they had a gravel driveways and, and, and we insisted that they have those paved. And that that wasn't a planned commercial district.
Well, by default in all of the residence districts, just like in this one, the zoning ordinance is saying that it should be paved with concrete or asphalt. That's why it's only with the relief of the Board of Zoning Adjustment. That relief is only due if and when the property owner demonstrates a hardship, some rationale for why they can't pave it with, with concrete or asphalt. So they have to prove that to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. It's not really just a given that the board will grant it. I mean, Jacobs explained some of our, our rationale. But that's, that's why for that residential scenario and here, it's technically, it shall be paved. I do want to point out one condition that we included is that no matter what the, the parking surface is, concrete curbs will be required. So even if they got a variance from the board for, you know, river rock to be their, their surface, there will be a curb that will contain it.
Yeah, the intent of that is to make sure that it is that there's not, what typically happens is the migration of, of these kinds of materials over time to keep it within the footprint of the parking lot.
All this to say, if the commission does want some additional language, there is a, a section in the report right now that talks about, you know, what they would have to, to request if they want that surface. Where we talk about how the, the variance is the only option and we could add some of this, you know, this, what these considerations in there as well, if that's the commission's will.
Yeah. Question.
What's your?
If MSD was, you know, I mean, they're looking at this. And I know this is the county's requirements for the parking lot to be concrete or asphalt. But seeing as it's right next to the floodplain, it would, I would think it would make more sense that for the parking lot to be rock of some type. And, and if it was the merrimac gravel, that would be a dust more of a dust free rather than limestone.
Right, because right now without you know, an amount of impervious surface, they aren't triggering requirements for detention, but that would be something that MSD would be considering.
So, so Mel, even if I understand this correctly, even if we would recommend this to be paved, the final say is, is through the board, the, the adjustment, right? For them to come in there and they could still make a hardship and they could say, yeah, you can go back with the, with the, the alternative dust free. Is that correct?
Yes, although I would kind of, I would sort of reframe it just a little bit in this way, Mr. Fagan, which is that what your, the request in front of you is really about the use. And by granting this use, the zoning ordinance would typically require their parking to be paved and stopped. Which is why you all, you really don't even have to say that you require it to be paved. It is under its current zoning designation, it is required to be paved. We bring it because the petitioner showed at public hearing that that parking is on not a paved surface. That is why we even bring it up as a point for your all's consideration, which is that to then get it to be not paved, they do have to, they have to prove that it is a hardship for them in front of the Board of Zoning Adjustment for that to be triggered and to be granted to them. So what you would do tonight is because, because what you would do is this, this would be a conditional use permit that would then sit on the site. The property owner would then be able to be using the site for their operations while they, you know, and then and, and go through the site development plan review procedure. And even if they didn't get that variance from the Board of Zoning Adjustment, they can still use the site under the regulations of St. Louis County, but then they would just have to, they would just have to pave it as per what would be required in a standard R five. So you are right, although I would just sort of change the framing of, of it a little bit.
Yours makes more sense. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Anything to be added? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed. Eyes have it eight zero. And we'll go on to PC oh five and oh six dash twenty four VP two four four East LLC.
Good evening Commissioners. This is PC zero five and zero six dash twenty four VP two forty four East LLC. This is a request for a change in zoning from C six Office and Research Services District to R six Residence District and a request for a planned environment unit procedure in R six. This is a five point four eight acre site on the northeast side of Thornhedge Drive and. This is a 5.48 acre site on the northeast side of Thornhedge Drive and Valley Park Road, approximately 100 feet south of Highway 44. Of note, the preliminary site development plan will encompass both this parcel and the adjacent one in the city of Valley Park. As you can see on this map, the site is in Southwest County and it's on the aerial bounded in red. The larger area in purple is the entire proposed development. And as you can see, again, the larger area in purple is the entire proposed development. This used to be the site of Wet Willies. The petitioner is requesting a change in zoning from C6 Office and Research Services District to R6 Residence District with a planned environment unit in R6. A PEU is appropriate for sites with challenging topography or those which have proposed shared structures and amenities. The site was previously subject of a change in zoning request in association with the proposed medical office space. And although this request was granted, the office was never developed and the lot is currently a vacant wooded area. The preliminary site development plan shown at public hearing depicts two multifamily buildings with 84 total units, one detached garage and one clubhouse next to a pool that's going to be on the Valley Park side. Approximately 180 parking spaces are proposed and access to this development would be from Valley Park Road and Smizer Station Road in the city of Valley Park. After public hearing, the petitioner also submitted a landscape plan featuring a 20-foot landscape buffer along Valley Park Road and similar buffers along the western side, adjacent to the single-family house, residence and along the northern property line near one of the telecommunications towers. The department is recommending approval of the change in zoning. Residential zoning is appropriate at this location and a multifamily development is desirable to provide a greater variety of housing types for residents. The department is also recommending approval of the PEU procedure as it is appropriate for the topography and proposed structures on the preliminary site development plan. As the commissioners may recall, site photos shown at public hearing depict the steep slopes on the property, which according to the petitioner were a large factor for why the site is currently undeveloped. And finally, the PEU procedure will also allow the commission to recommend further conditions of development regarding the property. So the department is recommending several revisions to the site plan seen at public hearing and landscape plans submitted afterwards. First, this proposal is significantly overparked. The requirement is 1.5 spaces per unit and the provided parking is 2.2 spaces per unit. It's nearly 150% of required. The department is recommending removing the parking spaces closest to Valley Park Road and increasing the landscape buffer yard. The department is also recommending an increased quantity of trees and shrubs. So standard requirements are one tree and four shrubs per 20 feet. And the department is recommending three trees and five shrubs per 20 feet of street frontage. The department is also recommending 0.0 foot candle intensity within 20 feet of Valley Park Road and within 20 feet of Booter Park. And these listed provisions may help address public concerns about car headlights shining onto the street and other light spillage and general privacy loss. Next, the department is recommending a traffic, traffic study and construction of a sidewalk along Valley Park Road in response to safety concerns brought up at public hearing. And finally, the department is requiring the submission of architectural elevations for each proposed structure, including the garage entrance monuments and retaining walls and fences in order to maintain the country feel of the neighborhood, which was referenced by current residents via public comment. At this time, I would like to request a motion.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion? Elliot, they'll make a motion to accept it with the revisions. Second. Do we have a second?
Second, Sagan.
Okay, discussion, anyone?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
There seemed to be some public discussion about there being multiple points of entry into this development. And that the developer was going to work on having, I think, a single entry point. Do we know where that has turned out at? Or i- and is that something that we have any say over?
So this parcel is actually being developed in conjunction with the parcel within Valley Park. And that's, we're on the left in this, so you can't really see it, but there's a second entrance there on Smizer Station Road, which is within Valley Park. I think we agreed that we would have them do a traffic study to find out what the impact is. The developers have indicated that they would prefer, most people use Smizer Station Road for entry and exit.
And to, and to build off of what some are saying here, you know, they indicated, and, and we generally concur and, and find that due to the nature of where the location of the entrance, the really true main, main entrance to this site is really in the Valley Park, which is off of Smizer Station. And that's because it's a, it's a, it's a site with a, with a, a traffic control device. It's got, it's got a light that you, that would assist with getting into and out of the development. So we do find that that is going to be the primary exit. We also find though that especially when you have this many residences, it is, i- it's good planning practice to have multiple, multiple entrances into a residential development. And that this does provide a, a sort of secondary entrance to the site, secondary entrance exit to the site. It's also good for, typically also for emergency purposes to have, have a second entrance, especially with this many, with this many residences, resident, you know, residential units within a development. So we find that it is within good planning practice. And that is also though why, because we, we are aware of, you know, concerns from, from local residents as to the increase, you know, of traffic. That's why a traffic study should be conducted to ensure that any sort of entrance here is, is put at the location that will not negatively impact or increase any sort of safety issues on this site. And so that is also part of the, would be part of the development process and part of the permitting process.
Anyone have anything to add?
Yeah, Wayne. Yeah, Keith here. I, I would think the fire department is also going to expect that there's at least two entrances in here. For this, this many residents on these apartments.
I agree. Based on doing a traffic study, Jacob, what actions can we take at that point?
You know, so if they did conduct the traffic study that did find that the, that the proposed location where they're showing it is unsafe, it can be moved within the sort of face of the, they could, they could sort of, you know, move it, you know, to, to be in conformity with what the traffic study finds. And we would, we, you know, we would ensure that during the site development plan review process subsequent to this. Additionally, the second piece of it would be that if the traffic study did show that it, that it was completely unsafe, but, but I concur with, with what Mr. Taylor was stating, which is that the, the fire protection district is going to expect there to be some secondary exit or entrance. So if it ever had, if it had to be reduced to an emergency exit or an entrance only, that would be also something that could occur. So that's also an option. And those would be, those would essentially be the two, the sort of ways that that would, that, that would go. But I do, I do find and, and do would expect that there would have to be some form of access to Valley Park Road if, for no other reason than for emergency purposes.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, let the record show eight in favor. And we will go on to the next item. Which is letters for approval.
So the first letter is PC 3623 True On Tan. This is a conditional use permit in the C2 for a vehicle repair facility. The commission voted to grant the conditional use permit at the February 12th executive session after public hearing. This letter is consistent with that action.
Okay, we need a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second, Sagan.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. Next is PC 01 dash 24.
So the, the other two you did act on, as new business.
Then we got the Greg Schaefer, right? Or do we need to do him?
That one you also did.
Okay.
When it was, yes, as new business.
Okay, then we'll go to correspondence.
So this is sort of a weird one. The commission will recall PC 32 and 33 23 Islamic Society of Greater St. Louis, which was a two-part request for a change in zoning to the R1 Residence District and a conditional use permit in R1 Residence District to permit a cemetery. The first request was necessary because only in the NU and the R1 are cemeteries a conditional use. So that was the purpose of the first request. And the second was to request the conditional use permit to develop the cemetery. So the commission in January forwarded their recommendation on the change and their decision on this conditional use permit. When it went to the county council, it was inadvertently combined into an ordinance with conditions instead of a, an ordinance just for the change in zoning so that the commission's granting of the CUP can stand independently. So the purpose of this correspondence item is to request that the council strip those conditions of development out of that ordinance, so it just stands as a change in zoning because the conditional use permit that you've granted will have those conditions in it. So this is basically to rectify that error. This doesn't change anything from the commission's actions in January.
Okay. We need a motion?
Some of Handcack.
We have a second?
Second, Sneed.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. We'll go on to site plans. We have one.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, it wasn't unmuting. PC 15 dash 23 Tiffany Mays. This is a C8 Planned Commercial District. It's a 3.14 acre tract on the east side of Tasson Ferry Road at Cedar Plaza Parkway. The commission will, will recall this site is in South County and it is an existing multi-tenant retail building outlined in red on the aerial. And there are no site changes proposed a- as part of this request. So the, the existing building will be reutilized as is, as will the parking. And they provided updated parking calculation tables showing that their use, which is the Adult Daycare Center, will be accommodated for in the existing parking. And so we are recommending approval of this site development plan.
Okay, we need a motion?
Make a motion, Sneed.
Do we have a second?
Elliot, second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. Next for the good of the order, 11A. Educators.
Good evening. We talked about conditional use permit in our last monthly education and we thought to talk about planned districts tonight. As you can see on this slide, 45% of the petitions were related to planned districts. While that was in 2022, in 2023, we had 40%. This shows how important it is. So how do we define planned districts? What are the, and why are they important? Planned districts have a significant history and evolution in the United States. The early 20th century saw the rise of zoning regulations in the United States, primarily aimed at separating land uses to address issues such as congestion, pollution, and incompatible land uses. However, these regulations resulted in uniform segregated development patterns that did not account for mixed-use or innovative design principles. Similarly, in the 1950s and the 1960s, which is seen as a rise of suburbanization, was characterized by large-scale housing developments and automobile-centric planning. Zoning regulations in this case also favored singles, single-year zoning, leading to homogeneous suburban landscape devoid of diversity. Therefore, the concept of planned districts emerged as a response to the limitations of traditional zoning regulations, which failed to address the complexities of modern development needs and community desires. These modern developments include smart growth, mixed-use development, transit-oriented development, pedestrian-friendly and pedestrian-friendly designs. Planned districts allow for greater flexibilities in land use and design, enabling developers to negotiate with local governments to create innovative and mixed-use developments. It is now a well-recognized tool used by the local governments. This legal framework and nomenclature, however, vary across jurisdictions in the United States. In St. Louis County, according to our zoning ordinance, we have four types of planned districts. They are the planned environment units, the mixed-use development, the C8 Planned Commercial Districts, and the M3 Planned Industrial Districts. Tonight, we'll focus on the C8 Planned, Planned Commercial and the M3 Industrial Districts. The mixed-use development and the planned environment units will be discussed in subsequent monthly education. According to the zoning ordinance, the C8 slash M3 Planned Commercial slash Industrial Districts facilitate the establishment of combinations of developments and uses for which no provision is made in any other single commercial slash industrial districts. They're also used where more development control is necessary to protect the general welfare than is possible under regulations of other commercial slash industrial districts. So what are the requirements from the zoning ordinance to establish a planned district? The zoning ordinance states that planned districts could be established by the county council. It also states that structures in the planned districts must maintain a minimum setback of 10 feet from property lines adjoining non-urban park or residence districts with additional 10-foot minimum setback requirements for structures exceeding 30 feet in height. C8 Planned Commercial cannot be established on any tract of land less than one acre that has a common property line with any residence district and does not have a common property line with any commercial or industrial districts. Planned districts requests, um, planned district requests for a range of uses can be broader specific and we advertise accordingly. On this slide, we have examples of very broad requests and how they are written in a public hearing notice. To the left on the screen is a C8 request to permit all C3 shopping permitted uses, including a self-storage facility. And, and also we have the M3 request to permit all permitted and conditional uses in the M1 and M2 industrial districts. To the right was a C8 request for a fast-food, financial, and all-permitted C2 shopping district. From this example, we can see that truly the planned district is the mechanism that facilitates the establishment of combinations of developments for which no provision is made in any other single district. We also have specific, specific uses, requests for specific uses. These are examples of requests for specific uses on this slide. Again, the planned district is necessary for these types of developments because more development control is necessary to protect the general welfare than is possible under the regulations of a commercial slash industrial district. So irrespective of this example shown, irrespective of these examples shown in this, in the previous slide, some uses are permitted by rights in the C8 slash M3 Planned Districts. And they include the police, fire, foster stations, local public utility, correctional institutions for M3 and accessory uses incident to the uses just mentioned above. Now that we know what planned districts are and how they work, how do they differ from other procedures? On this slide, we have the difference between the planned district and the conditional use permit. The planned district differs from the conditional use permits in significant ways. As you can see on this slide, we have five different aspects. The planned district allows for customized developments within a designated area, while the CUP grants permission for specific land uses under certain conditions. The planned district offers flexibility in land use, density, and design, while the CUP provides flexibility for specific land use activities within existing zoning regulations. While the CUP provides flexibility for specific land use activities within existing zoning regulations. The planned district requires the submission of a site development plan, which is evaluated in relation to surrounding land uses. The evaluation of the CUP, on the other hand, requires passing the four-prong test. The planned district is a legislative action. The county council must change the zoning maps and adopt a planned district ordinance. Whereas the planning commission is authorized to grant the conditional use permit. Examples of planned districts are the planned environments using, planned environments unit and the mixed-use development. While that we conditional use permits are, for example, a vehicle repair for automobiles in a C two or asymmetry in the residential. Districts. So what is the difference between a street district and a planned district? The process for a planned district request and street and street districts are similar. What we mean by street districts are districts with regulations established by the zoning ordinance. The major difference are that while applying for a planned district, you must submit a preliminary site development plan. Which serves as one of the bases for planning commission recommendation. The commission considers whether the range of permitted uses are appropriate for street districts. While the planning commission evaluates the proposal in relation to surrounding land uses. The conditions for development for a planned district are the application. The preliminary side development plan shown at the public hearing, information provided at the side. Information provided during the public, um, hearing. Best planning practices and public comments and concerns. While the conditions of development for a street district is the regulations of the zoning ordinance. So what are the actions of development? So what are the actions that the planning commission can take on the site development plan shown at the public hearing? The planning commission can limit permitted uses and also state maximum floor area. The planning commission can be specific on building and past, and packing setback. The planning commission can require more landscape. They can limit height. They can request for revision of parking. Um, requires for architectural review, specify sign restriction, fencing or other screen requirements. As well as specify hours of operation. Um, but this has kind of like enforcement issues. So what happens after the planned district is granted? Within eighteen months, the developer shall submit a site development plan to the planning department for his review. And approval, uh, for his, for his review and approval based on the ordinance. Please note that the county council legally adopts the preliminary site development plan when they adopt the change in zoning. The department reviews the site development plan and architectural evaluations while the planning commission approves. The county council gives authority to approve this site development plan to the planning commission. The site plan is then recorded after this. Then the developer has two years for substantial construction. Substantial completion for projects involving structures is the completion of excavation for footings and foundations. While substantial completion for projects without structure is the completion of grading. So here is an example of a preliminary site development plan slash approved development plan. This is the Starbucks plan on telegraph. As the commission may recall, this was a request for a, for a fast food. Restaurants with a drive-through. The planning commission made recommendation for boullards at the, for boullard and side proof friends along the eastern property line. And required more landscaping and also limited lighting standards to sixteen feet. There was also a configuration of the drive-through as you can see from this slide. This is also, um, the architectural elevations for the Starbucks on telegraph. The planning commission made recommendation for more fenestration on the western or art on the western facade. To improve the visual appeal along telegraph and also the planning commission made recommendation for high quality built materials. As you can see, the preliminary side development plan and what was finally approved, that is a difference between the two. So these are powers that the planning commission have on, on site plans for planned districts. So do we have questions about the planned district?
Anyone? I, I guess we're good at this point.
Thank you, Ebola. That was, uh, you did a really nice job. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Um, next we go to eleven B, update for Salas County, twenty fifteen.
Yeah, so, um, just wanted to keep the commission apprised of where we are currently on the new comprehensive plan. So, um, Paul Weatherford, who is our senior planner for long-range planning, he could not be here this evening, so I will be giving the update, um, in his stead. So just to let you all know that, um, the steering committee for the comprehensive plan. We have, uh, we will be sending out the invites to those individuals tomorrow and the first meeting of the steering committee will be on March twenty eighth. So we're glad to be moving that forward. Um, we're continuing to work on the survey that will be sent out. It will be statistically valid survey, um, that our consultant is putting, is, is going to be putting out. So we've been doing the finishing touches on that language, making sure that, um, we're asking questions in a way that get, um, really good information. Because the information that we get out of this survey will serve sort of as the legs to start scaffolding up our, um, outreach and engagement. Um, you know, sort of regime and paradigm on top of. Um, the county planning department will be out at, we will be at Earth Day. That will be our first sort of like, um, in-person outreach events. Will be at Earth Day in April. That will be at Forest Park. So we will have a table there. We're excited to, to be chatting with residents that will. It's technically in the city, but there will be a lot of county residents that we get to engage, um, that will be partaking that day. Um, and also just to let the commission know that, uh, AE COM has been working on the first really, really big deliverable of this. Which is the existing conditions report. So it's a lot of maps. It's a lot of charts. It's a lot of graphs about where St. Louis County has been and where St. Louis County is today. And so AE COM will be coming back to St. Louis in person, um, to present to the planning commission. We will, we'll make sure that that gets onto your calendars well in advance, but we're thinking that that's going to occur in April, absolutely no later than May. But we're thinking it's going to be, uh, next month that they're going to be back with us in person, um, to walk you through the findings that we have to date. Um, in terms of, uh, the existing conditions in St. Louis County. We've had a lot of really great conversations with, with multiple stakeholders ranging from, uh, the municipal league through multiple, uh, of our utility partners. Nearly every department we've had, uh, one-on-one conversations. Uh, we've been talking with, um, housing groups, with economic development groups. So, um, we have been having and getting a lot of really, really, really great input, um, in conversation going about this. Um, but that is where we are right now and I would welcome any sorts of questions that you all may have.
Okay, anyone? Questions? I guess we're good.
All right.
Thank you, Jacob.
Of course.
At this time, we need a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Taylor, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero and, uh, we'll see everybody in person next Monday.
See you in a week. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.